Terrific, let's call the meeting to order. This is the October 4th, 2018, meeting of the Town and Sherburne Select Board. Asked the town administrator to read the agenda with any proposed changes. We'll then amend and approve the agenda and take any public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we'll have a public comment, and nobody has signed up. Consideration of consent agenda, which includes consideration of a one-day pouring license, payroll warrant, minutes of July 11th, 2018, and scheduling the next meeting of October 18th, 2018. And consideration of financial and operational matters with the update on custody of library trust funds, Heidi Doyle, Town Treasurer. Consideration of second day of special town meeting, which will be Saturday morning, December 15th, 2018. From the Town Clerk's office, consideration of approval of a reserve fund transfer request, consideration of approval of November 2018 election warrant. And the Sherburne Yacht Club will begin with a discussion on long-term rental for a plot of town-owned land next to the dock at Farm Pond with Brian Moore, Commodore, Sherburne Yacht Club. And consideration of final approval of the open space and recreation plan with Marion Nuttre and John Higley of the planning board. And then routine business, town administrator reports, selectmen reports, and adjourned, and there are no amendments.
Any amendments to the agenda? I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The consent agenda, any comments about the one-day pouring license, payroll warrant, July 11th minutes? And then the last item is the next scheduled meeting is on October 18th.
Chuck, I think Diane circulated another set of minutes from August. Is it possible to include those in the consent warrant as well?
Oh, that's right.
Oh, I didn't bring them. I was going to bring them to the next meeting, but you have them with you.
I wasn't there for that meeting. It looked like a pretty simple set of minutes.
It was set, simple.
Yeah.
I wasn't there either.
Yeah, that's the August...
Friday 16th.
Yeah, we want to continue to lead the pack on getting our minutes current, so...
There we go.
Yeah, we have two in September. She's working on them right now.
Terrific. So let's...I move to amend the agenda to add the minutes for October...
Second.
Excuse me, August 16th, 2018. All in favor of the amendment?
I'm...
Passes five zip. Any comments on either the payroll warrant, the one-day pouring license, or either set of minutes?
A comment on the one-day pouring license. There's a request for a police detail, and the number of attendees is 100, so it falls right at the borderline, so I can't object because it's within generally accepted standards. So I will be voting for that.
Terrific. We have a motion to approve the one-day pouring license, the payroll warrant, and the minutes for July 11th and August 16th.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Terrific. The next items are consideration of financial and operational matters. Heidi Doyle is going to provide an update on the custody of library trust funds, and you want to move that to the next meeting, right? Because this is in process and being discussed, so we'll move that to the October 18th meeting. Consideration of the second day of the special town meeting for the Saturday session, Saturday morning session. Did anybody have any questions or comments on that?
I have a comment, Chuck. I know we've scheduled this meeting, and we think it may need a second day. I don't think we have any business on this meeting yet, or at least not any business that we know we have yet, so I guess I'd be in favor as a provisional matter to include that date, but I think we should realize that we may not need a special town meeting at all. I mean, I think we're scheduling this in case we need it.
Great. I agree with that. Any other comments here?
So I move approval of December 15th as the second night of town meeting if needed.
A second date, it's going to be for the morning. You said second night, I thought.
Second...
Yeah.
Second day, second session.
I'd second that motion. All in favor? Terrific. Okay. Town Clerk's office, consideration of approval of reserve fund transfer.
What about opening and closing the warrant and stuff like that?
Yeah, we need to do that. Haven't done that yet.
Yeah. Thanks, Paul.
In the timeline, we had specified October 18th to open and October 31st to close. You can vote it in one vote if you wanted to, or other dates.
I'll move to open the town warrant on October 18th and close on Wednesday, October 31st.
Why are we leaving it open so long?
You can open and close it in the same night if you want.
I'd rather make it a lot shorter than two weeks.
If we have the town meeting, it's going to be a very focused town meeting, so I tend to agree with you. I think a week is probably enough. Want to open it on the 18th and close it on the 25th?
Well, I don't know if we'll know by then what we're doing, will we?
I would go later.
Yeah, I would say you want to open on the 25th and close it on the 31st.
That makes sense. Any discussion appear?
I agree that the town meeting, if held, is focused on a request from the library for additional funding. And so I would want to discourage people who may have some issue that they want to bring forward. Please wait for the annual town meeting on those issues. The annual town meeting is a better forum for consideration of citizen articles and also departmental articles. Unless there's something of grave importance, we do want to stay focused on the library request.
I agree, and I...so I'd move to open the warrant for the special town meeting on October 25th and move to close the warrant for the special town meeting on October 31st.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Tell the Pats we're going to be playing later tonight. This is...Brian, the next item on the...oh, no, we have the reserve fund transfer, I'm sorry. Dave, are you going to tee this up, or who's going to be handling this?
Um, is Jackie?
Jackie, are you handling the reserve fund transfer?
I'm not sure what it's for.
Terrific. Thank you.
Well, it's a no-brainer, and there are...some of the situations arisen in other communities, I've been through this discussion many places, that it costs almost as much to rent a machine as it does to purchase them, and you need additional machines because often an effort to combine elections with the state election. So having been through this numerous times.
And the payback is what, in two election cycles? It'd be paid off, paid for itself by the 2020 state election? Maybe even sooner if there's a early voting for all elections? Anybody have any questions for Jackie? Or Jackie, did you want to say anything about the reserve fund transfer?
Well, one of the main reasons that we need it is because we cannot cast the early voting ballots until the election day. So it lasts for the presidential election, it took us five hours, five people processing the ballots, and so to try to do that with one machine is going to be virtually impossible. We had a second machine for the presidential election, and it will be...it's impossible. We're probably going to have about 800 ballots based on history, early voting ballots, and it just...economically, it just makes sense if we're going to need two machines to purchase it, because again, the next presidential election will be paid for unless the state does go for all elections.
And the additional amount is of $1,150 that you're requesting?
The difference, the difference, yes. So Carol budgeted $1,950 plus the 500, so $2,450. So yeah, so we're looking for an additional $1,150.
And why are you asking for this now rather than when you run out of funds?
The $1,150 would be for rental. You're looking for the...
No, we want to purchase the machine.
No, but I'm saying that would be an additional $3,250, right?
No, no. She had already budgeted for...the $1,950 plus the 500 is already budgeted to rent, but when we found out that it was...how much it was going to cost, it makes more sense financially to purchase the machine to use and then...but we'll need an additional $1,150.
For $5,700. So the math is that $1,150 would be if you were renting it, $3,250 as you're purchasing it.
It's $3,250, isn't it?
Instead of $1,150.
Yeah, that's the delta on the purchase.
She's looking for an additional $1,150. So the rental for last year for 2000...yeah.
But that would be only $3,600. What I'm saying is...
Yeah, you're right. I apologize. Yes, you're correct. You're correct.
So it's $3,250 that we're looking for.
Yes, yes, yes. The total is $5,700. Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
George, I'm glad you brought your abacus with you today, so...
So, but I agree, and it probably makes sense, too, if there was ever a problem with one machine to have a backup as well.
Well, we had two, but we cannot...it's impossible. You cannot...we'll be interrupting the lines. We cannot process 800 ballots on election day...
Makes sense.
...with everyone else voting.
How many are written in Russian?
Yeah, hopefully not.
Yeah. Do we have advisory's approval on the reserve fund transfer?
Yes, yes, they did sign off on it.
They've already signed off on it?
Yes.
Yeah, and my only question...I think it's a good idea. My only question is, why now? It's unusual to do this in October rather than waiting till budgets are getting thin in the spring and doing it.
Because we're going to have to rent a machine for the November 6 election, so...
But if you have a budget that you can buy a machine from, you can't buy a machine out of your current budget?
We'll have to...no.
You don't have enough in the current budget for that machine?
Correct, correct.
Because this is out of the elections budget, not the town clerk's, right? There's two separate budgets?
Yes, yes.
So the election budget doesn't have a ton of money in it?
Doesn't have any, yeah, any flexibility? Okay. Yeah, I mean, it just would be good the next time to anticipate it, but you know, I support it. I think it's a good idea.
You support it enough to make a motion?
No.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
And I will say that I've been through this in other communities, so the timing and pretty much everything that Jackie said has been said in other communities. So it's...no one is waiting to the end of the fiscal year during the backfill budgets. Everybody's pretty much doing it. Everybody that I've had to sit through and listen to is...
No, it makes...I mean, George's point that it's a thin budget for elections makes sense.
Yeah, and we don't think early voting's going to go away at all, so I think it's a good financial decision because then we, you know, we'll have to keep renting one.
So is this going to be enough with the two?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll have the regular voting machine upstairs and then the second early voting machine upstairs, but in the corner separated, and we'll process all of the early voting ballots. We'll be able to do those during the day and not interrupt the line for the people that actually come in and vote on November 6.
And you're going to get this in time for November 6?
Yes, yes.
And the quote that you have from LHS associates is good for 90 days after September 24th, so you've got a locked-in price on this, correct?
Yes, yes.
Well, I would move...
Already moved.
You've already moved it.
You've gotten the second?
Addicted.
Terrific. Any other discussion? All in favor? Terrific. Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
Okay, the next thing we need to do is to sign the November 6, 2018 state election warrant as presented, and...
So moved. I think we should have an election in Sherburne along with the rest of the state.
And I remember the last one had some strange title. I can't remember the position, but these all were recognizable. So do we have a second on Paul's motion?
Second.
All in favor? Terrific.
Before we leave the subject, just want to remind people that there are three ballot questions, so one thing we sign, not only all the state office overs all the way down to the district attorney and clerk of courts and register of deeds, but three ballot questions. There's the nurses' question, which is question one. There is the...the corporations donating political contributions, ballot question. And there's the transgender discrimination, question three.
Well, the transgender question would take away rights, as I read it.
If the yes would keep in place the law which prohibits discrimination.
Oh, it's to approve the law?
It's to keep it in place, I think of...
I was reading it wrong.
Yeah, no, the yes vote would be to keep the anti-discrimination laws in place.
So they passed the law and we still have to vote on it?
One question that seems to be generating the most lawn signs is the...
One.
Is question one on the nurse staffing ratios?
It's all over the place.
Lots and lots of signs. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of a potential long-term rental for the Sherburne Yacht Club for a slice of land next to the boat launch, Farm Pond. Brian?
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Brian is the...Brian Moore is the Commodore of the Sherburne Yacht Club.
Congratulations.
Don't Commodores usually have hats?
I prepared a very short statement I'd like to read if it's okay with the select board. Evidence of the influence and importance of Sherburne Yacht Club lies everywhere in town, from the periodic articles in the newspapers to the repeated images of the sailboats on the phone book. With membership numbers approaching 200 families each season, there's little doubt that this entity is part of town life in Sherburne. For 50-plus years, the Sherburne Yacht Club has been an integral part of this community. Our board members, staff, employees, membership, and guests have all contributed to that intangible special feeling you get when you go to Farm Pond as a vibrant part of this town. They are the volunteers who selflessly contribute their valuable time and talents to the benefit of town committees and community organizations in an exemplary manner. Years ago, as a first-time board member, I was shocked to learn that Sherburne Yacht Club owns no land of its own, nor do we have any deeded rights or access to Farm Pond. We exist as a social club and have resided on Farm Pond for the last five-plus decades entirely at the discretion of our benefactors. These benefactors being the current and historical owners of waterfront land on the pond, including those who currently and previously have owned 197 Lake Street parcel where we now reside. As stated in the memorandum we served the board with earlier in the week, we've been working diligently over the last several years to identify options and opportunities for formally securing the future of SYC at Farm Pond, and in the process of doing so, we've concluded that what we believe we have identified, a very small piece of land which exists between the town reservation land, which is essentially the boat ramp and the parking lot, and it also includes the beach, and the 197 Lake Street parcel of land. There is an approximate 17,300-square-foot parcel of land that was actually deeded to the inhabitants of the town of Sherburne by Henry Roberts and Sherwin Badger, and is not ...and we have no knowledge of it being encumbered by any restrictions on future disposition or potential use. And for these reasons, we believe there are no impediments to a potential future use by SYC that would so obviously benefit the town residents while still complementing existing reservation operations in a manner similar to way in which we currently operate. As a board, we believe these...there are numerous benefits to the town to keeping SYC in such close proximity to the reservation, and based on the fact that the identified parcel is an unbuildable parcel of excess land, we respectfully assert and believe that the benefits to the town are greater under hypothetical scenario where the parcel is sold for the intended use of continuing to foster SYC's instructional sailing program and other Farm Pond-related activities. We therefore respectfully request the select board consider either selling the land directly to SYC or consider letting the inhabitants of the town as the true owner of the parcel vote on such an action through the town meeting process. We appreciate your attention and consideration in these matters.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
Usually ask everybody questions, so brace yourself. What's wrong with what you've been...your current arrangement that has gone on for, to my knowledge, 30, 40, maybe even longer years?
Well, right now, we have no written agreement at all with the landowner at 197 Lake Street, nor do we have anything in writing or anything in a deed that says we have access to continue to operate or exist on his parcel of land. It's entirely a handshake gentleman's transaction.
But it's worked all this time. Is there some precipitating event that needs you to believe that you're going to lose that?
Well, our relationship with the current owner is strong. I would characterize it as strong, and it has been strong since he moved in, much to the thanks of Roger Demmler, who informed the owner upon buying the land that, by the way, Sherburne Yacht Club exists on your land, and this is the way it's always been, this is the way it's always going to be. But there is nothing in writing, there's nothing in the deed, aside from just common knowledge of those of us who, you know, have sailed off the docks and swum at the pond, that that's where it's been for a long time. There's really nothing that secures that for our future, and now that we're 50-plus years old, we're starting to think about longevity of it and make sure that we want to try to secure that future forever if we can at the pond, whether it's through purchase of land, which we've proposed a couple of things that haven't really worked out for us or haven't panned out for us, or a long-term rental with the town.
Have you explored a long-term rental with the current landowner?
We have explored both the long-term sale and purchase with the current landowner.
And what is happening in those discussions, is that an option?
I'm not sure that the...I'm not sure that I can characterize them as having been entirely positive for us in terms of what we financially can afford to do as a, you know, small little yacht club and the...they haven't really borne any fruit, so to speak, I guess, is the best way to put it.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Well, the next question is, you have a dock there, correct?
That's correct.
Is that dock all floating, or are there any pilings?
There are no pilings. They're not allowed in a great pond in the Commonwealth. So we have a floating section of docks that are attached to the...a series of docks which are fixed on the land in a kind of a gangplank-type situation where the first two docks serve as a flexible gangplank that allow the floating docks to rise and fall with the water level, and the fixed docks remain fixed or on pylons, which is allowed under state law, but we don't put anything into the pond like...because that's actually allowed.
What I'm trying to get at is, is it movable? So if you did get a different parcel of land, is...what kind of disruption...
I'm glad you asked that question. I would like to show you exactly what we're thinking about doing. This is a map of the neighboring land that has a depiction of...is it okay if I stand up?
Please, actually, that's what we were hoping to see, a little bit better map than these...
Please approach the bench.
This is a map of the 197 Lake Street parcel as it was at the time that it was most recently dated and recorded. And what I have here is the docks. Now, if you guys have ever moved docks, you know exactly what it's like. It's a real nightmare. We just did last weekend, and my back is still chiming. This is where we are right now in Farm Pond, and this is the boat ramp, and this little sliver here is the parcel that I told you about, which is actually...has none of the restrictions that the other town reservation land has on it, which is why we're interested in looking at this. So this is what we're thinking of doing. Pretty simple. All of these docks are removable docks right now. They're up in the parking lot. They get pulled every winter so they don't get crushed and moved by the ice. We put them in...we're talking about next spring essentially just putting them in a different location at this point in the pond and taking the bug moorings, which are typically here, and just swapping them back and forth.
Just moving it like whatever it is, 100 feet or something closer to the bridge?
I think it's more like 50 or 60 feet. It's pretty...right on the property line.
And I see moorings are all the time, those boats, so that's going to decide.
Yeah.
But you understand that the boat ramp...the boat ramp is where?
Right there, sir.
So we wouldn't want to interfere with people accessing that, which I assume is down here?
That's correct.
That access would be unchanged. There's...was this an Eagle Scout project, a gate?
Yes, they did put a gate there.
Chinese pagoda.
Yeah, they thought they were putting it on Mr. Jokowski's land. I found out after the fact they actually put it on town land, but it's essentially that demarcates the property line between what I call the reservation land and this excess land.
Very lenient to how close to private property you can hold a boat. I mean, like private property, the home right to the high...
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of. We've just set the moorings where we...as many moorings as we need. If it's 50, 100, then we do as many as we can, and then we start assigning them and helping people get their boats to them.
What do you need to own this or have a 50-year lease? What's wrong with having a revocable license that would let you rest those there and take them in and out?
I don't know what an irrevocable license is.
No, a revocable license. In other words, you would be given a license until the town decided it had another use for that property?
I hadn't thought that deeply about it. It sounds...
Essentially a lease, really.
It's not a lease. I mean, it's very different than a lease because the town could decide...see, so if you have a lease or a sale, we've got to advertise it, we've got to accept bids, there may or may not be anybody who bids, we've got to appraise the property and see what it's worth, we've got to decide if we're willing to sell it or give it to you for less than fair market value, and we would also be taking a parcel of, even if it's not part of the reservation, a parcel of, you know, land that's suitable for recreational purposes and dedicating it to one group. I mean, a group that has a lot of members and has done a lot of good things and has been around for a long time, but might not be around forever, might not be around in its current configuration, might not be run as openly and as well as it's been run in the future. A revocable license, you know, sort of a year-to-year kind of thing, or even something that's good until it's not good anymore, that would at least give the town a little bit of control over the circumstance, and it would still give you the comfort that you had the right to put the docks there, and it would, you know, presumably include the right to access down the road and the right to leave your docks in the parking lot in the winter and all the other stuff that you're doing anyway, so...
Yeah, the only problem I see with that with the year-to-year thing would be, I think they were looking for some more long-term stability than having to come and ask for it every year.
Well, they may not have to.
Could you do it like a five-year term?
Well, you could do it as...you could do it that it renews automatically, you know, unless it's canceled.
Right. You could actually do a multi-year. I just want to address his point that they wanted some more stability.
We're also thinking about it being a plus for the town in terms of, you know, having some land that will then go back on to the tax records or something that, however small inside it might be, would be generating more revenue for the town, which, you know, the land is not...
You're a nonprofit?
Excuse me?
You're a nonprofit?
There'd be no tax.
We were the wrong kind of nonprofit.
Well, I mean, we could take a license payment each year, too. That would be equivalent to the taxes, so...
Yes, but you're tax-exempt, I believe.
Well, even if they're not, I mean, we could take a license payment that's equivalent to whatever the taxes would be on a dock, which has got to be very little, even at our rates, has to be very little.
I'm not looking to make money on this.
No, nor am I, no.
I think what you're hearing is that some legal problems with what you're proposing to do. First, the selectmen don't have authority to lease for 50 years. That's what's going to require a town meeting vote. Secondly, for us to lease land, it has to be advertised, we have to get bids, depends on the value of the property, so we have to have it appraised in order to determine what the leasehold value would be, et cetera, et cetera. So this is like a lot of work that goes into that, that...
That's not the reason not to do that, I guess.
Well, as you mentioned, there are options that we...that were not discussed in this proposal, but we're really looking for some help and guidance from the select board and other F-PAC and whoever else wants to get involved to try to secure this future because right now we're still on a handshake deal that could go away.
Actually, that was one of the questions I wanted to ask about F-PAC, but I...George, I had the same reaction, which is a term of five years, you know, renewable, gives the town the chance to change its mind if...
But just a quick thing, because I've dealt with revocable licenses. They can be multi-year. Essentially, it's effectively similar to a lease. It's not an interest in property like an easement or a fee symbol.
It's just a contract.
It really is. And it can be multi-year, just to exceed three years, and needs authorization at town meeting. And you actually...to actually determine if you're required to do this kind of fee or whatever else, you can get appraisal, or you can just have an opinion by... of fee or whatever else, you can get appraisal, or you can just have an opinion by the assessor. An opinion by the assessor can be sufficient to actually make sure you're having highest and best use out of an, actually, either a lease or even an outright property transaction.
So a three-year term or less does not require a town meeting approval?
Correct, yeah.
Even, even when you renew it?
I mean, it'd just be every three years.
Yeah.
It'd be a new one, or whatever, whatever you want to call it, you know what I mean? Because it's essentially a contract.
It's not an interest in land. I think you can do it without going through the 30B bid process, or if you have to go through the process, it's a different process.
You can do it without 30B.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I wasn't aware that it was limited to three years without town meeting. I thought the municipal act gave us a little more authority.
We've always treated it as a contract, and actually, under state, was required by three years, but maybe not, maybe, maybe there are exemptions.
We should figure that out. I mean, you know, the way I was thinking about it was, you grant the license for some longer term, whether it's five years or whatever the term is, subject to revocation if the property's not cared for, or if there's a, you know, a serious issue. You might not be around forever, it might, you know, get taken over by hooligans or something, I mean, so you want, so you want to protect the town, you want to protect the town's interest?
You worried about the Sherburne Pirate Club?
I kind of am, yeah. That's a, you point out that club?
Yeah, I remember the yacht club. I might actually have to recuse myself on this. How many other, how many other members of the yacht club are there?
I'm a member.
Well, and the other advantage is that the yacht clubs clearly provide, it'd be better to have the town as your licensor rather than a private party, even if it's a three-year term, but...
Does that, does that take more land on the tax rolls that's not being used for the yacht club?
Just wouldn't put it on the tax rolls.
There's, I don't think there's any tax implications one way or the other.
For the par, private parceling, then?
I don't know, it seems like it'd be much more valuable without a dock on it.
Unless they reassess, they reassess the property at town, then, boom.
Well, our intent is obviously not to make things more difficult for the town at the reservation, but, you know, in the interest of self-preservation, I kind of put this on myself to make sure that we secured something so that there's some opportunity for longevity for the club.
Have you discussed this with FPAK? That was the question that I had.
We haven't appeared at an FPAK meeting, no. But we would be happy to, you know, we figured we would start with this.
I think that makes sense, but...
Yeah, yeah, they advise. I mean, I don't know that, you know, thinking back to my time on that board, I don't think there's any specific plans that the advisory committee or the Farm Pond Plan has for that piece of parcel of land, though. I don't believe there is.
So can I say that I support the idea of giving some stability to the organization? It's been a wonderful organization. I, at one point, was a member of it. I'm not a member of it today, but it's been a contributor to the quality of life in Sherburne. And you do make a good point that you ought to have some stability. So I support the concept of allowing you to put a dock on this parcel. I think what you're hearing is not any disagreement from the board on doing that. The question is how to do it in a way that makes it easy, protects the public interests, and accomplishes everybody's purposes. That's what we've been discussing, but I think the concept is a good one. We do want to support the yacht club. We do, its presence there is an asset for Farm Pond. All those things that you've said or would have said, we agree with, I agree with. I think the rest of the board agrees with it. So perhaps this is something that we ought to ask town council?
Yeah, to look into.
Why don't we ask town council for the idea of a renewable?
Revocable, I think.
Pardon me?
Revocable.
I'm sorry, revocable.
And renewable.
Does that work for the yacht club?
Yeah.
Yes, honestly, it's, to have something finalized is what this meeting is about.
Okay.
It's not about so much. We all understand what the goal is. It's about what process do we go through to finalize this, to get this on paper?
So what we're talking about is a three-year term, automatically renewable, but revocable?
Yeah, and I mean, I would say it is an asset of the town. It, this is a suitable use for that asset of the town, but, you know, we may want to think about, even if it's not a monetary charge, is there some service day obligation or something that gets put into effect as part of the license so that there's some exchange of value for using the land? And I know it's a nonprofit or a volunteer organization, and there's dues that people pay to use the boats, but the asset's an asset of everybody in the town, so that maybe is a way to account for that.
Selectmen get free memberships.
Yeah, we already help monitor.
I don't think that works.
We already help monitor the bow ramp, we already put the things on the...
So maybe those, so maybe those are the things you put in the license?
Yeah, we already put the windows up on the bathroom, we already monitor the gate from time to time.
Yeah, so maybe those are just the things you put in the license.
We just identify those as consideration, yeah.
I don't want the town to think we're just giving land away.
Well, Libby and I had the choice of joining the New Bedford Yacht Club or the Sherburne Yacht Club, and we chose the Sherburne Yacht Club.
Good.
And maybe the fact that we can't handle any of the New Bedford Yacht Club boats.
How's that ocean access?
Yeah. Terrific.
Thank you very much for your time.
I bet you the boats in New Bedford are a little bigger.
They're a little bigger.
They might push you...
They're whaling.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consideration and final approval of the open space and recreation plan with Mary Ann Nutra, and I don't see John Higley.
No, this is, that was a mistake. John was not on this.
He's at the Pats game at Gillette Stadium, is that what you're telling us?
No, he's planning board, and this is not planning board. This is open space.
Open Space Committee.
Different beast. And the open space and recreation plan is, is not the general plan. It's a plan required by the state, and it has a lot of elements that are required by the state, so the organization of it, that may look a little redundant to you, is because it's, that is exactly the organization that's required by the state.
Why are you touching my stuff?
If the plan is basically done, and it's been to editor and back, we're still looking for small errors of fact or typos, so any time you have to look it over would be appreciated. I'll just pass it along, that is one color copy. It's a bit expensive to print, because it has some really nice photos all through it that we hope are there to sort of entice people to go on to the next page and see the next photo and read it. It's, it's an educational tool for the town as well as a useful milestone for the town to get be eligible for grants from Division of Conservation Citizens in the state building. So I brought this hard copy just to show you what the final plan is going to look like. This is not the final. We're required to give it to the major boards and communities, in particular the Select Board, to get your official approval. And Diane has already drafted a letter of approval. Very nice letter.
Thank you.
Any enthusiasts who want to attach it, I'd appreciate it, but...
Would you need that letter by, Mary Ann?
I don't need it. I, I'd like to have the letter by the middle of October.
Okay. We can probably read this in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's, it's a long document, it's 146 pages, but depending on the agenda for the, our next meeting, David, can we put this on?
Yep.
Schedule this for the October 18th meeting?
Ironically, look what's on the cover.
Yes, ironically.
So I have some, some thoughts about this. If I could?
Please.
So first, I would say, I want to give great praise and thanks to Mary Ann Nutra for an unbelievable job. This is so thorough, so detailed, so lovingly done. When you add that to all the stuff you're doing for the general plan, it's, it's a wonder that you can carry on your normal life.
Oh, what normal life? No.
So on behalf of the community, I want to thank you for doing this. This is a very impressive job.
Thank you. There, it is, there is a certain economy of scale. You'll notice a lot of these, the goals and recommendations for open space and recreation are exactly the same as we have in the general plan, and that's on purpose. What's different is the background, the educational text.
Well, that's what I want, there's a couple there that I wanted to just highlight for my colleagues, because I think it's worth having a discussion about, perhaps not today, but at some point. This, towards the end of the document, there's a list of goals and objectives, which I'm going to find where I folded back the page for the one I want to discuss, but I can't... Do you know what page those are?
I don't remember the page, it's, it's...
Oh, here they are, they're in page IT-89, going forward. And I wanted to highlight just a couple of things. The, things that I think are worthy of sort of a town discussion. And, and one of those is that there's a recommendation for a recreation manager. And I've seen that recommendation, and people have talked to me about a recreation manager for a long time. There's a lot of advantages for us to have a recreation manager, and I've heard how some other communities that we compare ourselves to have a recreation manager, and why doesn't Sherburne have a recreation manager? That's been a debate ongoing for at least twenty years. And the issue has always been the funding for a recreation manager. And to, to make that happen, it's, I'm not questioning its presence as, as a goal, and it's something that should be in the plan, but I, because it's been discussed for so long and never gotten into the end zone, if I could use a football analogy, the, the issue always has been, where is the money going to come from to pay for a recreation manager? At some point, this board ought to have a meaningful discussion about that with the Recreation Commission. It's fine for a plan to say that's our goal.
And it may be long-term, it may be time to reconsider whether or not we participate in the Community Preservation Act, because last time, there was concern that we were taxing ourselves in advance for things we historically had not funded, recreation, affordable housing, and historical preservation. Two of those three were making a serious effort to fund, the affordable housing and this recreation plan, so that, that may be something worth discussing, whether or not we want to adopt the CPA.
That's somewhere in the plan, too. If not in this plan, actually, it's not in this plan, it's in the general plan.
It's in the general plan, yeah.
I mean, some of our recommendations are not like hire a recreation manager, it's like reconsider hiring a recreation manager, reconsider joining the CPS, et cetera. We certainly couldn't make that pronouncement, but we wanted to express the felt needs of at least a portion of the community in those regards.
So I just want to highlight that, not to provoke a discussion today about it, but to highlight the fact that there's been decades of discussion about a recreation manager, and we don't have a recreation manager. And yet, there are compelling arguments to have one, and by including it here in goals, there's an implication that our, this is sort of a semi-commitment to do something about it again. So if we sign off on this thing, we ought to, we ought to take that seriously. The other little comment I had was on the disability pieces of this. As part of this plan, we have to certify that we comply with Disabilities Act, and we have a grievance procedure, and all that kind of stuff is part of this plan. Yet frequently, when I'm in the State House, I get pulled over and people say to me, you know, Sherburne doesn't have any, any trails that the state recognizes. The state doesn't recognize what we have here, because by law, trails need to be accessible to the disabled. And most of our trails are just trails in the woods, or horse trails, or that type of thing. There hasn't been an effort to have fully accessible, disability-accessible trails in town, and I think at this point, we have none. So I was going to suggest that with the rail trail, with the funding that we got as an earmark from the state level, why not make that trail a disability-accessible trail? So at least there's one that we can put on, we can register with the state with, and include that somewhere in here as a, as a specific disability-oriented goal.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, Paul. That is a really important gap, and the town has been for a long time. For that reason, we do have a plan to make the rail trail extended into Sherburne, make it totally disabled, disability-accessible. And in fact, there, there's quite an effort now to make that happen. I don't want to go through the details, but that is, is definitely going to happen.
But is it here?
Yes.
In the goals?
It is.
Okay, I didn't see it, but I'll take your word for it. Thank you, that's all.
The last time you brought this up, Paul, Sean had said that that money for the rail trail was going to be spent on a handicap-accessible rail trail. I think that's been the discussion. All that money that has already been set aside, that's what it's for.
Yes, I just didn't see, I didn't see it in here, and maybe...
Well, it may be hard to find things in there, I'm sorry, but...
I was, I'm just commenting on the text of the, of the plan. So I, just as a footnote to that, in these conversations I've had have been with people who have money to give us to create a disability-accessible plan, and they're saying, why doesn't Sherburne ask for some state aid?
Paul, look at 1D3 on page 94.
1?
1D3 on page 94.
It's also in the text. I think it would, you find it in section 5.
It's right here. That's test 1 on 94.
Yeah. I assure you, we spent a lot of time talking about this, Paul, because it is an important point, and we could do a lot better. One of the values in the eyes of the state in doing an open space and recreation plan is exactly that, forces a community, a community to do an evaluation of where they stand regarding disability access. And we don't have nearly enough disability access. Also, appendix D, I think, I think it's, it's one of the appendices, it may be appendix C, is a detailed rundown of all of our recreational resources, and the first page of that is a general statement about trails.
It's D.
It lays out the problem we have with our trail access.
There's also a discussion on page 65, I think that's the one you were just referring to, section 5 of the, the text.
That's right. But that said, I totally agree that there are other trails that could be examined more closely for access, like the Barber Reservation, certain trails near the entrance of the Barber.
Yeah.
And perhaps other places.
Yeah, those trails at the Barber that lead to the fields.
Right.
Those would be...
Those would be candidates.
Those would be good candidates. There's that one long access road down, probably needs some work.
Yeah, so your point's well taken.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure it's in here, thank you for that, that those are right, two comments.
Terrific. So we have a homework assignment to read this and to identify errors of fact? We wouldn't deign to change your wonderful writing, and if John were here, it might be a different answer, but you're looking for errors of fact, correct?
Errors of fact, typos. I'm not relying on you for typos, we have plenty of typo experts, including a professional editor, so, but if you see one, you know...
Now it's a challenge.
Yeah.
Right. There are a couple of errors of fact. I would like to say I planted them, but I didn't. They're actually non-mistakes. So if you happen to find them, I'll know you read it.
So there is a test.
It's a great idea.
Mike wanted to know at the beginning of the meeting if there was going to be a test on this plan. There is. It's coming two weeks from now.
This is on the webpage, if I want to print out a better copy.
It's, I sent you a PDF version by email.
Okay.
It's not on the town website because I can only handle so much input from so many people.
You sent that to us or to David?
I think you sent it a few weeks ago, didn't you?
I sent it to all of you.
Yeah, it was a few weeks ago.
That's on print.
I'm happy to resend. And as far as get it, unfortunately, it has to be a PDF because it's such a big file. It can't be a Word file, so you can't use track changes. But you can get, you can print it out for yourself. I'm taking that colored copy with me because I feel I've got. But you can print out whatever page you find error on. You can just write me an email. You can call me on the phone by any means, you know, that's useful to you, get me corrections, and I'll appreciate it.
Well, I won't repeat what Paul's kind and accurate words, that really is amazing, the work you've done on the general plan and this plan, so thank you.
I have to give a shout out to a couple of other, three other members of our rather small Open Space Committee. First of all, the Land Use Group that worked on the general plan contributed a lot to this indirectly. Tom Trainer, Kelly McClintock, and Seth Malloy really helped a lot with this plan. It's not just me.
Terrific. Thanks, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda are the Town Administrator Reports and Selectman Reports. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just three things. Pine Hill Cemetery Drainage Contract's been signed and awarded to, sorry, Fenari Corporation, and the work is to begin sometime next week. We had a pre-construction meeting this week with the cemetery commissioners, the contractor and STAN Tech Engineering who serves as the commissioner's project manager on it. Bowhunting has begun and will run through December 31st at Rocky Narrows, and will be open to hunters Monday through Friday. This has been advertised in the newspaper and posted on the town's website bulletin board, and the trustees of the reservation are handling the sign up.
Where did they post it? Because that was, we had a pretty extensive discussion about letting people know.
You mean physically on the trail? You mean physically down at Rocky Narrows?
Yeah.
I'd have to ask Dave Colleen.
It was posted. He was in the office. I'll have to ask. We'll check.
We were going to have him back in after the end of the season to give us enough.
Dave, what are the dates and the times on that?
It's Monday through Friday, but.
Monday through Friday, sunrise to.
Sunrise to sunset, yes.
The end of the day.
Sunrise to the other thing? Is that what you're saying?
The end of the day.
And what are the dates, David? What's the opening season and the close of season?
It's open now and goes to December 31st, New Year's Eve. The other item is the foreclosure that we had discussed at Tulie Lynn Farms has been canceled, and the owner secured help with that to retain the unit.
Hooray. That's good news. Must be a big relief to the owner.
Again.
Again.
Selectmen's reports. I have a brief one. I don't know if you can focus in on this. I'm wearing, proudly wearing the William Bradford Homer Douse pin.
I thought that was you.
No, this is George Fiss not risking his laurels for the Grange Fair, organized a wonderful ceremony at the memorial statue commemorating the 100th anniversary of the conclusion of World War I. This was sponsored by the Historic Commission, Historical Society, the Sherburne Library, Cemetery Commission, Sherburne Fund, and Doug Brody. Margot Poicki gave a wonderful summary of the life of William Bradford Homer Douse, who donated the money for that memorial, and one of the major funds for, endowment funds for the library. For all of us working in the tech community, I learned that he was a patent lawyer, who became president of Reed and Barton later in life, but it was a wonderful commemoration. Susie Wheelwright and Peggy Novak, who had shepherded the renovation of the statue and the masonry work, were there, and it just, it looks terrific. If you get a chance to go there.
So would it be fair to say he was a patently good man?
You could say that. Any other Selectman's reports?
Just a comment about Diane has been working hard to organize a Veterans Day event, and I think maybe we should ask her just to give us a little brief update on that.
Sure. It's going to be on November 11th, and we usually start at 11:00 a.m. It's 11:11, but given the fact that it's a Sunday and there are many services going on, church services, we've decided to hold off until 12:30 in the afternoon. So that's basically the only change this year will be the start of the start time, 12:30.
Yeah, and I forgot to embarrass Diane. The speakers at William Bradford Homer Douse Day were all singing your praises, particularly Peggy and Susie for all the work that you did on getting the funding for the renovation of the statue.
We're almost at the end. The preservation restriction has been signed by Paul Holtz. It's on its way to Lee Smith, who's going to record it, and once it's recorded, it's done, and then they'll get their money from the state, and then they're going to come in and give a presentation.
Terrific. Well, they.
The statue came out beautiful.
Singled you out for effusive praise, so. George?
Just a question, though. You talked about a talk about Mr. Douse's history. Is that available? Is that something that is in written form in any way?
I think Margot said that they were going to put it on the, I'm not sure. I think she said they were going to put it on their website. He was young enough that apparently he tried to be a drummer boy during the Civil War, so it was really, you know, the town owes a huge debt of gratitude to the Douse family. I'm not sure what his relation is to Elizabeth, but I'll check with her. That's a great idea, because it was really a wonderful presentation.
Thank you for representing us there.
Certainly. It was in the middle of the Pats game, so in the interest of tonight's Pats game, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Chuck, you're very efficient.